I call to order the peaceful meeting of the Franklin Town Council. And we'd like to start by having the pledge of allegiance led by our Vice Mayor, Mr. Joe Collins.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bill Dale and Mr. Mark McConnell, please come forward.
I don't think Mark made it. Mark did not make it.
Mark didn't make it. Well, then we'll have to rely on Mr. Bill.
We can do it. Council, we're here tonight to recognize one of our employees who will be retiring at the end of this month. So Mark McConnell has been with us since March 25th, 2002. And I kind of want to give you a little highlight of Mark and some of the things that he likes to do and has been doing for the town of Franklin as well. Mark was originally hired as an equipment operator when he joined the town of Franklin. His duties have changed over time while he's been employed with the town. He currently is doing the job as the pump utility mechanic. Mark has been overseeing water pumps and tanks as well as sewer lift stations for the past few years. Mark holds a collection system grade one certification. Mark has been passing knowledge to younger operators while dealing with confined space entry as well as how to successfully unclog our sewer pumps. Mark enjoys refereeing with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Some Friday nights, you can see him down on the field. He does JV football, he does varsity football. And I also would like to say that Mark's been very helpful with our younger guys with confined space, teaching those guys about confined space, how to test for confined space entries and all those things. He keeps these guys safe. And Mark also does a great job when he does these things with these younger guys about how to be safe, how to enter these spaces and to do it safely. Because his main goal is the town's main goal to have these guys go home at the end of the day. Mark's done an excellent job in coaching some of our younger employees, and I really do appreciate that from Mark. As I said, he's an active referee for JV and varsity football. Mark also is active in the community sports leagues. If you ever go out to a community sports league, you'll usually see Mark. He'll be refereeing the little girls' games or little boys' games, community leagues. Mark also loves spending time with his kids. One of his kids is here, one of them lives in California. But Mark enjoys spending time with them and their sports, doing things with them. He's right now coaching his granddaughter softball team. So Mark spends a lot of time in and out of the community. So also, he spends time camping. If you know Mark, he likes to camp. He's looking forward to spending a little time camping with his wife and enjoying the time that he's had away from work, enjoying that time with her, in which I don't blame him. Mark's been a long working career. The town of Franklin is going to miss Mark and the knowledge and the service that he provides for the citizens of Franklin and the Public Works Department. Most of you guys, as we've talked before, know that sometimes the jobs that we do are unseen. But without these guys, we wouldn't be having water going down the lines, we wouldn't be having sewer going down the system. So a lot of these things wouldn't be done if we didn't have people like Mark. I would like to wish him well in his retirement and the very best for what he chooses to embark on next. So that's coming up for Mark at the end of this month, I believe. He always had this thing joking with me, "I'm not telling you when I'm leaving, I'm just going to be gone." Well, he didn't know manager was going to tell on him, so. If you guys see Mark in the next little bit, congratulate him. You'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Bill. We have wished Mark to be here, but since he's not here, I'll depend on you to make sure he gets the certificate. This is a certificate of appreciation that presented to Mark McConnell. And basically, it says, "On behalf of the Town Council and leadership team of the town of Franklin, we present this certificate as an expression of the town's appreciation for the significant contributions that you have made as the town's primary pump mechanic during your tenure beginnings on March 25th, 2002 through your retirement date of April 30th, 2022. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors and thank you most sincerely for your 20-year service to the town of Franklin." If you'll give that to him, we'll appreciate it, and he's always welcome to come back anytime.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the thing about plumbing. Nobody worries about it until they get stopped up, right? It's not a problem. Thank you. And thank you all of our public service employees who keep things running here in our town. We have an agenda. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. And that's the agenda for the Town Council meeting for April the 4th, 2022. Is there a motion concerning tonight's agenda?
There's a be adopted.
Mr. Lane moves to be adopted. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Culpepper? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed with a like sign? Four to one, five to one, is that, is that right, Mr. Lewis? Do you vote against the agenda for tonight? Well, the agenda passes and we'll go to five to one. Now, the consent agenda, you have the consent agenda, which was part of the agenda package. There's been some discussion about some of the items on the consent agenda. Is there anything concerning the consent agenda that the board would like to discuss at this time before we seek approval of the consent agenda? Is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Collins make a motion that consent agenda be approved. Is there a second? Mr. Kinsey seconds the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is there a discussion?
Oh, discussion. Yeah, we can have some discussion. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for bringing that back to my attention. We're open for discussion now on the motion.
All right. So was there an item, there's an item that we had on there that's been removed, is that correct?
No, the consent agenda is all the items A, B, C, D, and E, is I understand it. Now, under the rules of procedure, any board member can ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda, which we had an opportunity to do that to start off with. If it's not removed, then the rest of, and if an item is removed, the rest of the consent agenda is up for approval. Is that right, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Two. Are we having a discussion about it for a sec? What, is there something that you guys want to change or add?
Yeah.
Well, my understanding is something's going to be taken off and discussed at another time, but it doesn't look like it has been.
It can be if the board wishes to do that.
Yeah, if you just want to have something pulled out, you can pull it out separately. Yeah, you don't need to have anybody else's.
I'll take the text. Should we pull something out?
Yeah. Item C, number B.
A.
Or A.
CA.
I thought there were, maybe there was a discussion.
There was some consideration of taking item 5CA off the agenda and put it on the regular business agenda for the next meeting in May, on May the 2nd. If that's, if that's what you're asking to do, is that what you're asking to do?
And I've just consulted your rules of procedure and there's, the rule about the order of business is as close as you get to the mention of consent agenda. You don't have a rule that says you do or don't have to have a vote on removal of something from the consent agenda. All it says is your, your order of business is going to be call to order, discussion or revision of the proposed agenda, including consent agenda, and then adoption of the agenda. I think the common understanding of a consent agenda is it's by consent of everybody. And so if there is a member who does not, is not ready to consent to all of the items, then it should be pulled from, from the consent agenda. And devolve separately.
Let's just, I know that we're dancing around a little bit. My understanding is that on the agenda tonight is the proposed changes, text change and some clarification language to, basically the longevity policy. That is the limit of my understanding as to what was on the board's on the agenda on that issue, which is an issue of the day. And I think that was most of our understanding. I don't think anybody, unless I'm missing something, really objects to the text changes. It's just the other issue about how the application would be to the current situation. And I think that we could easily go ahead and do the text change and not usurp any of that other issue. That stands on its own as far as I'm concerned. Or we can put them both over in May if you just wanted to do it together.
You could. Basically, what's on there is a language to clarify the current policy. That's all it is. It's not changing the current policy. It's just, as Mr. Collins says, language to clarify the current policy in terms of longevity. And it doesn't address any specific particular person or issue. It's just a change in the current, a change that basically hopefully clarifies what the current policy is and has been. And it was reviewed by the ordinance review committee. And I think all, all those on the ordinance review committee agree to the language.
Yeah, yeah. We, in the ordinance review committee meeting, we had no knowledge of who, what, or any person that was involved. It was a text change to clarify a policy because a query had come up.
Exactly.
It has nothing to do with any current situation. Art wouldn't change any current situation.
It doesn't change anything in the current policy. It just clarifies what the current policy says, if I understand it correctly. Is that right? So with that in mind, is there any action from any board member to change anything on the consent agenda?
Just so I'm clear, so existing personnel issues are not affected by the language that we're adopting.
They're not. This is the same policy that's been in effect since the policy was adopted. It just clarifies the language. Is that right, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
I have a question I should have asked Amy or somebody, but I didn't. Can I ask it now?
Sure.
The, the language about for whom longevity has been budgeted.
Yes, ma'am.
Each year, the town adopts a budget, which this fiscal year begins July 1st. And during the budget, money is set aside to pay longevity for people who qualify and reach their longevity date during that fiscal year.
I made the motion to remove it from the consent agenda and have it go to the May session, subject to any amendments to on that issue that somebody wants to put before the board and properly notice and properly set.
I'll second that.
You rescind your original motion to approve the consent agenda. And David, you're.
Chair.
You're agreeing to remove your second.
Yeah.
And the new motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of CA to be put on the May 2nd, 2022 agenda.
Along with any other issues that desire to be on that same schedule.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I did.
We have a second? Okay. Now we'll have some discussion. Is there any other discussion concerning this issue? If not, all those in favor of the motion, as stated by Mr. Collins, please signify by raising your hand. That appears to be unanimous. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Item C8 will be put on the agenda for the May 2nd, 2022 meeting. Now, item six, public hearings, public hearing to receive public input for voluntary annexation of 3011 Georgia Road into the town of Franklin corporate limits. And we will recognize at this time our town planner, Mr. Justin Setser.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Before you now have a hearing on a piece of property on the Georgia Road, most people know it as the fast food mart, the gas station, Exxon. Owners are wishing to have that property annexed into the city limits. As far as you know, they've, the town clerk has certified it, that it meets our standards to be annexed. Water and sewer is, it's already served by water and sewer, so there's no added cost or issue of any water soon being extended to it. They provided all the documents required with the meets and bounds of the property. And that's all I can think of. I haven't had any, I don't know of any phone calls of anybody objecting unless there's any here tonight.
No one has signed up to speak in this regard. Is there anything else you'd like to ask, Mr. Setser, or anything else, Mr. Setser, or like that?
No, I don't know if, the owners are here. They don't want to say anything, but they're here in case anybody's got any questions.
The planning board in the meantime will do their due diligence.
Yeah, that's the next step, being it's not zoned. Currently, it's not in our ETJ. It's just outside of it. It'll now go to planning board and they'll do an initial zoning. The recommendations, also the commercial C2 for it, because that's pretty much everything else is down the Georgia Road. And then we'll be bringing that back in a few months for another hearing.
Any other questions for Mr. Setser? Hearing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Request approval of an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Franklin.
Gentlemen.
We have a motion by Ms. Lane, second. Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. That looks unanimous. Thank you. Request planning board to evaluate and provide zoning designation for the newly annexed property. Is there a motion concerning this move?
Okay, motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey. Is there a second? Mr. Culpepper? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. That appears to be unanimous. Thank you all. The next item, we have item seven, is a call for a public hearing to be held on May the 2nd, 2022 at 6:05 PM to receive public input on a rezoning request for Mary B. Lane from Storage R1 to Commercial C2. And our planner, Mr. Setser, is here to give us additional information concerning that request.
Yes, this request was submitted back in February. Council, you forwarded to the planning board, which they reviewed last month. And at their planning board meeting, they voted to recommend the approval of this rezoning of Mary B. Lane, which is off of Brighton City Road, from R1 to C2 Commercial. Simply not need a set of hearing for our May meeting for that rezoning.
So the only action the board needs to take tonight is to actually go ahead and establish that public hearing for this request.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Kinsey, to approve the request for the public hearing on May 2nd, 2022 at 6:05 PM. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Setser. We move to item number nine under Old Business, update from Root and Barrel for lease of town property.
Mr. Mayor, you've got to do the public session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped right past public session. I've been on this job for a few months. I missed that course. But okay, public session. We have three people who signed up to speak on the public session. The first person whose name I read here is Rich Cassidy. Mr. Cassidy, in public session, we ask you to state your name and your address. And our public session is normally limited to three minutes.
Understood, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Cassidy. I live at 1126 Black Gap Road out in the county. I have a law office here in the town of Franklin. Purpose for which I stand here is to talk about the longevity pay issue, which, and I think, I believe I understand my limitations on speaking in general. Longevity pay in the Town Council's plan, section 13, it begins with, longevity pay is to recognize continuous service of regular, permanent, full-time and part-time employees. Longevity pay is an automatic annual payment made in a lump sum at the end of the month upon which the employee's anniversary date falls. Now, I would point out to you, this gives you two, two bits of information. The date mentioned is the anniversary date of that particular employee, whatever that date may be. It doesn't say anything about the fiscal year or anything like that. My, my paralegal hired on with me April 6th, so her anniversary date would be April 6th, not January 1st, which would be my budget, since I don't do a budget on, in October 1st or some other date. Then the policy goes on to explain who's eligible. And that's fine. And if it, and if it ended there, one would read this to say, it's longevity pay, you have to do your 12 months to be eligible. But that's not what it reads. In subsection F, longevity will be prorated and paid at termination of employment to qualified employment, to unqualified employees. There's nothing ambiguous about that. When they say prorate, they have qualified the language at the top that it's an annual payment. So if one hires on like my paralegal, April 6th, and, and my budget is April 1st, she would always, and I don't have the advantage of seeing what this clarifying language is, but I don't know how it would clarify an unambiguous statement. Here is your longevity pay, and it's for, you get, when you get that payment, it's for services passed. So if you get your longevity pay on July 30th of 2021, and it was certainly budgeted in there, your budget has a longevity pay line. It doesn't say who it's for. Your budget right now is a little better than 14 grand, and it just says longevity pay. It doesn't break it down as to who that's for. Now, maybe that's in some separate budget with PD or, or something of that nature, but it just has a line item of an amount. But it, it doesn't say that. It goes on to read, it will be prorated, presumably you would prorate it by the month because you paid it at the end of the month. So there's nothing unambiguous about that, and it certainly doesn't say anything about budgeting. So the only way that I read this, and I've shared some exchanges, Mr. Henning and I have exchanged some correspondence on this issue, and I don't read his position to how one could ever not retire after their date of anniversary, that it wouldn't be interpreted that way. So that's my three minutes, I think. But I ask you, when you take this up, May 2nd. There's, there's nothing unambiguous about the way this reads, and you'd have to plug ambiguity into it to reach a particular result.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for your comments. The next person we have at public session is Tim Shaw, Skate Park.
Good afternoon. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tim Shaw, and I'm representing the Skate 28. I see some skaters here today and some parents and a few business owners, so I'm glad they're still engaged with the project. I'm just going to give a quick update on some of our activities. The Tony Hawk Skate Park Project is helping us with our grant process continuing to. We do need some budget numbers for the project and a list of some in-kind services, and I might get some of that information tonight. They also want some information on the skate park construction company that will help do the finishing touches on the park. The Tony Hawk Skate Park Project requires we have a licensed skate park contractor involved somehow with the project and to be eligible for their grant money. And safety wise, it just makes sense, and it doesn't hurt to have a little extra help. The Nantahela Health Foundation's grant process has opened up today, and they have grants available from $5,000 to $50,000, so we're going to be working on those starting today also. We have raised over $1,000 so far with our bricks for the skate park project, and so that's working out good. And tonight, we have Phil Lamb with us. He's from LBJ Job Corps, and he works with the brick program and probably kind of maybe a phase two process of the skate park. And maybe instead of putting up fences, we'll put up some low brick rolls. And his guys there are willing to do that. And they want to help the community, help the town with that project. So maybe, you know, in the future, Phil will be working with that together with the town. So that's nice. And then John is working on a small sponsorship banner we might put up near, somewhere near skate park with some different businesses, just a small banner. And then the best news is today I got is that there's a new skateboard shop opening up here on Highlands Road in Franklin, very near where the skate park's going to be. And so this project is always starting to stimulate the town's economy before even a shovel full of dirt has been moved. So let's keep pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The third person signed up to speak in public session is Mr. Bob Scott, former mayor of the town of Franklin.
I'm Bob Scott, and I live at 86 Summit Drive here in town. Tonight, I feel like the working man in the 1943 Freedom of Speech painting by Norman Thankfully, we can still come and speak out to our elected people. Now, I've spoken out about my opposition to the lease to Root and Barrel for the use of town hall property, about outdoor dining and presumably serving alcohol. I will not belabor that point, but I do ask that you consider the following in your deliberations tonight. Would the council allow a food truck to lease a portion of the town hall property for an affordable hot dog stand? Or any other commercial use? Does the lease represent a public benefit at large? Does it meet ethical standards by council dedicated to serving the public fairly, equally, and beneficially? Has transparency been met by making this matter a public comment rather than public discourse expressed in a public hearing? Is the town hall property no longer a free speech zone if any exhibit, festival, or public use should disturb the diners? Is this lease a misuse of public property for private gain? Does this send a signal to the public that the lease is fair to all and local democracy prevails? Has anyone asked the town employees for their opinion of having this lease literally at their workplace doorstep? I know you're faced with a tough decision tonight, being pulled from all directions. This issue was wrestled with by prior council, and it's put on hold and tabled for the same reasons it should be now. It is simply very controversial. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. That was all the signers who had spoke, who had asked to speak at public session. So if they're in the public, we'll move on from public session to item nine under Old Business, update requests from Root and Barrel for lease of town property for outdoor dining. I think our town manager and our town attorney have been working on this, and I would ask them if they have any updates of information that they need to share with the board concerning this. Just to give you, just to give you some background, this was brought before the board, and it was a requirement, tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, that in order to lease publicly owned property, you can do it for less than 10 years without going through public hearings or competitive bids, but you have to do at least a 30-day public notice for public comment and input before any action is taken. That public notice was in paper, and it was published, and we That public notice was in paper, and it was published, and we did receive some comments, both for the proposal and against the proposal. I'm not going to ask you to read all those, because you'd be here past the ballgame tonight, and I don't think you want to do that. I'm being facetious now. But anyway, I'll ask the attorney and our town manager if they have some comments concerning this proposed lease, which was published and put on the agenda for board's consideration at this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any update in terms of the substance of the lease itself. It's remained the same as the proposed lease you have seen for a month now, and under the terms that you talked about two months ago, and began to outline three or four months ago whenever your retreat was. So, you know, it's been, I can't understand, I don't feel like it had been sprung on anybody. It's been publicly talked about. There's been multiple public opportunities to come and speak to you all about it, in addition to sending in thoughts and other comments that folks have. You're very accessible, so I think that that definitely was accomplished. As you mentioned, the statute says, "Provide a 30-day notice if you intend to consider the lease," and not, we don't have any direction that the General Assembly certainly could have given us to have some additional process. I'm completely comfortable with the legality of it. The public purpose doctrine part of this is an interesting angle. I hadn't thought through it quite the way I did for this one. You have clear authority under Chapter 168, Article 12, to lease out town property, and that's to the market. If you had a duty to make sure that nobody who let lease property from you could benefit from it, you'd never fund anybody to lease town property, you know? That's, I can't reconcile that with some idea of the public purpose doctrine, that you can, you have to prohibit any public benefit, any private benefit whatsoever out of that arrangement that you're clearly authorized to enter into. I think that you have advanced a couple of public interests in the form of the Land Use Plan that says we are interested in facilitating outdoor use of property, and it's the one that happens to be right next to you. That's just, that's just pure happenstance. I think you could lease out a piece of property to a hot dog cart if you wanted to. You know, if you had somebody interested, you could definitely entertain it.
Well, aren't we going to be discussing social districts at some point this year, too?
Quite possibly. The last thing, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions, is, and I want to thank Council Member Slane for drawing this together for me, that the idea of that, I think there's a term in here of quiet enjoyment, and Joe backed me up here, that's a legal term of art. It does not mean anybody's got to tiptoe down the street past that lease section. It just means we're not going to intentionally go up there and say, "Hey, get off our property" until the lease is done. So again, happy to answer any questions you have.
The lease that you prepared concerning this request at this time is as identical to the lease that was prepared when this issue came up in 2020, except for the amount of the rental payments. Is that accurate to say?
Well, there's, the rental payments escalate now, and substantially, it's similar to that one. The other things that we were concerned about as a town at that point, like removal of the drain that puts water onto town property now from that property, they've agreed to get that fixed within a reasonable amount of time, I think, and also to relocate.
Current proposed lease?
Yes, sir. It's in the lease, and also to relocate the dumpsters that's in there. And I think most importantly, really, for legal concerns, is that they've agreed to indemnify the town for anything they're doing on that property, so.
If I recall correctly, that was in the original lease, and the proposed lease or leases objected to that and refused to sign that particular issue of the lease proposal at that time, and it wasn't brought back before the board for any kind of final vote?
That's correct. Yeah. It was pulled from an agenda where they had made it clear that they weren't interested in that draft at the time. So there was no action taken by the town council.
Are we not following a precedent that was set by a previous board when they leased the former town hall to the lazy hiker for a brewery?
Yeah, in terms of service on, service of alcohol on town-owned dirt, which it will remain, you've just leased it out, you did, the council already addressed that with the lease to the lazy hiker and changed the prohibition about service of alcohol on town property to say, unless it is leased out to somebody else, owned, controlled by somebody else. So you've essentially already made the, you know, changed the ordinances in the way that are necessary to accommodate this.
The main difference, I think, between that issue and this one is that property has been declared surplus by the town council, and not.
I guess. I don't, but I mean, the ultimate leasing of it, I don't think, yeah. It's, you've already adjusted the ordinance about service to fix that problem.
How many comments did you get?
I don't know if you evolve market.
Those are all from Bob's page.
Yeah, Mr. Scott provided.
Oh, from the page.
It's hard to say. It's kind of, you know, it's a string of discussion.
Oh, okay. 168?
Yeah.
Yeah. About 168.
But how many did what the paper said to do?
There was only 14 that actually sent emails in to me directly.
Questions for the attorney or the town manager?
There is a proposed plan for the area that it was in your packet, showing, it was an engineered drawing for the area. It would be a deck rather than something that is solid, no pavers. They would have individual footers so that it wouldn't take up as much space if, for some reason, it had to be taken down into the lease.
This lease is non-transferable?
Correct. If, for some reason, someone else purchased that building and that business, we would have to renegotiate the lease at that time.
I didn't see it say, I mean, does it say that?
I think it's silent on that issue. I think it would be transferable for the three-year.
For the remaining time.
And subject to all of the same terms, so.
That's what, I mean.
Yeah.
But you thought it wasn't transferable.
Right. I thought it wasn't. That's, hey, I'm going to listen to the attorney.
Yeah. The town council prepared to make a motion concerning this request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What's that?
Approve.
The lease.
They have a motion, Mr. Goffey, to approve the proposed lease of the Root &amp; Barrel for the terms listed by the attorney for a three-year period of time, with graduated lease payments first, second, and third year, and the second item, Mr. Culpepper?
Yes, sir.
Now we can have a discussion.
If y'all have any ideas for things to do on town property that are going to benefit the town and bring people into downtown, come talk to us about it and kick ideas around. If you want to build a balcony and use our sidewalks, put poles in, come talk to us about it. If you want to put a low-cost food truck or a hot dog stand on some town-owned property somewhere, here, in front of the fire department, wherever it is, come talk to us. We're open to ideas about this kind of thing. We want to make the town a better place, more livable for our constituents. We want to get more people downtown, because that benefits everybody.
And to stay downtown after 6:00?
Yes.
About a memorial they parades.
Someone else?
I'll just, I'll make a comment about why I'm voting for it. One reason is because, you know, in my work with small towns as a planner, these kinds of, these kinds of projects where private enterprise can partner with, with public entities tend to be very successful, and they're easy ways for us to help spur development in our town, as opposed to, you know, we spend years and years extending water and sewer, building roads and things like that to bring in national chains, and I believe, you know, I heard some comments that this would change the face of Franklin. Well, I think it will. I think it's a small way to change the face of Franklin. It's not a big expense to the taxpayers, and it's also not an expense to our quality of life. I think a lot of times, we're out chasing these big dreams with roads and sewers when we can do small things like this to keep people downtown, to make this a more livable place, to do things for the people who live here.
Well, it's proven that trying to recruit business from afar all the time is not the way to build local economies. I mean, really, it is the entrepreneurs and investing in that. And there was a lot of discussion on Bob's page about balcony, you know, putting things on top of roofs, which I think, you know, probably would be a good idea, but the expense involved in trying to do that in some of our older buildings would be something that would be, and I don't know anything about building, but I know.
We may get there. You get enough people downtown, that demand, we might see that.
Yeah, but at this point.
Baby steps.
Yeah, so I appreciate people wanting to expand in our town and do things that benefit our people, and I appreciate the concerns that Bob has had all along.
Anyone else?
I had concerns early on, but way early on, but those were laid a long time ago, and this, this lease satisfies any concerns I might have, and so.
The town board has always been, as far as I've known, been on this board, served as a board member, and now in this position. And even before that, the town's always been a big supporter of downtown in promotions, parades, activities on the square. A lot of things that the town board has initiated and participated in, helped boost business and commerce and activity in our downtown area. And I don't think anybody, whether this motion passes or not, I think the town board is still committed to doing what it can to improve our downtown. I'd like to thank all the people who made comments over this comment period, those who commented in favor of it. I didn't read all of them. I read most of them, and those who commented who were in favor of it, and also those who made comments that were against it. Then I have to say this, I understand former mayor Bob Scott's concerns about it. I think his concern is what's truly in the best interest of the town. I think he's committed to that. He's shown that to his public service in the past, and I appreciate him and his views and his comments. This is, as we said earlier, a forum for anybody to state their opinion. You don't have to agree with it or disagree with it, but they have an opportunity to state their opinion. It comes down to the town board. The town board has to make a decision. Any decision like this that you make, there are going to be some people who applaud you. There are going to be some people who want to burn you at the stake. So it's almost a no-win situation in many cases. But the town board is ready to act evidently on this proposed lease, which is very similar to the original one that was brought up two years ago, and had some concerns, and the concerns were basically from the property owners at that time. And I think there's been a lot of discussion in and around about this issue from board members and the public, and I am somewhat concerned about, as Mr. Scott mentioned, using public property to, that's currently being used, for the benefit of a private party. That's my only concern about it. I think downtown dining and outdoor dining is fine. I'd like to see more of it, and I think everybody here would. That's the only issue that I've had, and I've discussed that and made that claim in the past. When the board acts, the board acts. If someone on the board votes differently than someone else on the board, that's all said and done, and when the board takes action, it's action by the entire board, no matter what the numbers are, as long as the motion is carried. As mayor, I don't get to vote unless there's a tie. So unless there's a tie on this issue, you won't be seeing me raise my hand tonight. But I just want to express my opinion about that and let you know that I think the town board members are sincere in their desire to do what they think is best and in the best interest of our town, which we love and we want to protect and we want to grow. So with that said, I will ask you, are there any other comments concerning this issue? Hearing none, you've heard the motion of the second to approve the lease that's drawn up by attorney, and at this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed by like side? It's apparent that the motion passes on a unanimous vote by the board. Mr. Attorney and his manager, we'll take care of the details on that. We appreciate it very much. Are we on B now?
Yes.
We have an update about the skate park from Steve Sommers, J. Dunn, and our town manager.
Well, I don't think I need to go up there, everybody can hear me. I was trying to find out, we were actually down at the property today. Dirt will be being moved this week, not tomorrow, it's going to rain, but at some point this week, we will have the dirt moved there that will build the ramps. After talking and meeting with Ms. Owen and a few other council members, just to clarify a few things, J. Dunn is going to act as the GC, which in our part means that we are going to, if what, let me make sure I clarify this. I have not spoken to the person that I need to speak to, and our legal department is out taking care of someone, but we have talked about it before. We can act as the GC. We can pull the permit through the, through the county for that, but we would be a no-cost, no, not at-risk GC on this as a partner with the town. That being said, the dirt is going to be moved, and then as far as what Tim said earlier for the licensed skate park contractor, that is your designer, and that's the people that we'd actually talk to about doing the final work of that, so they would have some part in that, so he could get that, that lease. But as far as that goes, we're moving dirt this week. At that point, there's just a few other things that we need to do, the 301(c), is that saying that correctly? Nonprofit.
501(c).
501(c), sorry. I'm not a nonprofit guy, but that is, that has been taken care of, and donations have been pushed there, and they will write all the checks through that, and I think there's only two people that I know of that can actually authorize checks to be written. So for us, we will help raise money, and we are getting volunteer labor to take care of that, and then as far as a GC side of it, since the town's not a contractor and we aren't, we will submit a permit, and again, like I said, it would be a no-cost, for us, it'd be a no-cost, no liability contract for us, and when J. Dunn may get back, I'll get that together and have it sent to Amy for her to look at. But that's kind of where we're at now. So breaking ground may have already happened. I was down there with my grading contractor earlier. He was supposed to start moving dirt this evening. I don't know where we got, because I didn't stop about there to see. I did text him just a minute ago to ask if dirt had been moved. If not, it will be Wednesday morning. We will have all the dirt moved down. It'll take us a day to get it, what we need for the ramps, and it'll be put in place.
You're still, I don't have it done before you leave town?
Well, as I said before, I live in Canton, so leaving town, and I might leave here, but I will be here until it's done regardless. I will act in that capacity. So when I say J. Dunn, that's, if you need our license, that would kind of be what that would be for, as far as the superintendent, same as me running the hospital. I'll be the superintendent on the job. J. Dunn fired me, I'll still be the superintendent on the job. We've had some people leave, and they've agreed to come back on certain work days, but yeah, we, we would love to have it done before we leave, but if we don't, I'll live an hour right now from here, which, if I bow on that, I'm glad we're done. I got to pick up my grandbaby before 8:00, but outside of that, that's kind of where we're at. So you'll see dirt moved down to that site. At that point, it, I've got to get with our office next week, see what we need to do, and I'll talk to Amy again to see what we need to do. And I'll talk to Amy again and see what we need to do. And I'll actually talk to, uh, the county to see what needs to be done as far as a permit or if they, they possibly could waive the permit. Uh, that's up to them.
That's good. I know there's a lot of young people waiting in anticipation of this thing being completed. And, uh, thank you for your work, your volunteers and everything you're doing to help us put this together. And, uh, we know where Canton is because we know somebody from Canton, so.
Yeah, yeah, I do too. Uh, and I will say this about your town. You, I heard you talking about it. And one of the comments I made early on, uh, I've been in a couple of your 5Ks here, you guys do something almost every weekend. So I live in Canton. We have like Tomato Fest and Bluegrass Fest. People here should be able to be proud of the town that you have and the events that you have. I mean, I came up for the eighties thing and I was like, told my wife, I said.
You hear that joke?
Every weekend they have something going on. So. If that's it, uh, I've got to, to run, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask Amy, we're good with finances for phase one at least. We're short on finances for phase two of the actual finish work.
Yeah, so, um, I am not exactly sure. I know with the donation that was offered by the, the county and money that's already been raised and monies that we have from our trades that will be sent into that. And that would take care of materials and then we would have workdays that we would actually take care of labor. Uh, phase two could possibly be after we're done with just the concrete structure itself and/or it's the radiuses. Radiuses would be phase two. So there was some monies there that we're a little bit shy of that goal, getting that done. And that is the material we have. Um, we have that, like I said, if you take into account what the county has, we have the material money to, to buy all the material for the project. Um, but there is a cost with pillar design for them to send people here with equipment, stay in the hotel and do those radiuses. Uh, we talked about Ashville Pool or maybe somebody else reaching out to them. But again, if we look to get money from Tony Hall, then we need to look at, either way, we got to employ somebody to do that. I would prefer it be the licensed skate park contractor. And that way, if there's any other ways to raise money through that, then, then we have that coming.
Just for our knowledge, funding for phase one's pretty much secure. We're waiting on the, on the county to cut a check maybe. But phase two, we're thirty to forty thousand dollars short?
About thirty-five thousand at this point, yes. And that pays for the specialized contractors like Steve was talking about to make sure the radii are the right.
And that gets the concrete work done for the skate park. It doesn't get decorations and bench?
Right. It doesn't do all the apron around it, anything like that. Doesn't do landscaping.
But it gives the thing that we.
It gets the, the park itself, yes.
So basically you'll see a concrete skate park and we are doing dirt backing. So behind that concrete where you slope off will be soil and it'll be grass. And it'll, it'll look like your field and just concrete skate park on your field.
Has the county, have they sent a check yet?
They had not when I checked this afternoon, but they did receive the same information that you have showing that we now have all the miscommunications taken care of. We're all on the same page. We're moving forward. Um, again, like Tim said earlier, they're looking for additional grant funding. We're going to be able to provide now the budgetary numbers that they need in order to secure some of those grants, so.
And once the money is in the account, um, you put in order of concrete rebar?
So we're gonna move soil and then we'll have a weekend of compacting the soil and then cutting. We would need Pillar to provide us with a template, uh, which they will. Uh, and basically it may be just a mail to us paper template. We would cut it out of plywood and then our grading contractor, once he compacts those mounds of soil, we can cut it to the right radiuses. At that point, yes, just a matter of ordering stone base to go down, ordering rebar and then concrete to do all the flat work. Uh, for us, we have everybody in line or at least everybody's gearing, uh, told us that we're in line to go ahead and do all the flat work. And when I say that, that's just the flat parts. And then we have in the center, if you haven't seen the design, it does have a slope with a rail that goes in there, but we can get all of that part done. Uh, when that's done, then our steel contractor, Dave Steel out of Asheville, has offered to bring in the rail pieces for us and for the radiuses, the top of those radiuses. They've offered to donate that. When we get that in, they could actually come out and field measure for all that, fabricate those, send them out. We would just core down into that concrete and then pour that in and then that, you have that section done. So we would do everything to the bottom of the radiuses and stop. We'd have the hump, uh, basically apologize for my ignorance on the verbiage, but we'll have that little piece in there, uh, for that. And then it would basically at that point just be the radiuses and need being stopped.
Do you have engineers, uh, you need to make sure you test the, the soil to make sure the compaction is right before you pour concrete. Do you have engineers or somebody available to do it? The bare ground that's gonna support what's put on top of it?
The, the soil will support it. It is an outdoor space. It, to answer your question, the radiuses would be the only thing that we'd need to test. It is no different from putting a sidewalk anywhere else out there. You can put it, the, the soil that you've got there should support the skate park. If it does sink, this is one six thousand square foot chunk of concrete that's gonna sink about an inch. That soil out there, we can have E C S. I can talk to them the next time they come out. I gotta have them out for some state work, just have them do some, uh, some D P testing to let you know about what that is. And we can proctor it against the hospital because we're that close. And if it doesn't come close, then we know there's something wrong. But as far as that goes, once we put the stone down, that is kind of your buffer between the soil, just like you'd do a sidewalk, and it takes into account for that settlement.
Hope we will have a better luck on this than the state had with Cowie Mountain on the other side.
Don't. Oh, that? Yeah. Uh, I, lots of comments on that one. I don't know how, I think the engineering was right. Uh, I just don't want to say them there. But that being said, the hospital itself, we ran into the, to a similar problem. We found two springs on the property that were originally there. If you had, went over, you've seen grass, but it was actually half of that twelve acres was underwater all the time. Um, and now that we put a French drain in, in the back of it, if you go now, you can see that one of the banks is starting to shear off. Spring actually moved once we put the controls in, cut off the fissures that it was coming down. So now we gotta go put more controls in. So as far as Cowie Mountain, I don't, I don't, I don't want to tell you. I think the engineers had the, the resolution right. It's just, you can put everything together, but you can't stop water.
The money, they've just been on that over the last fifty years. They could have built a Vida.
Yep, they could have, or they actually just moved it over one lane and went into the bank over here and you've been out of that problem. So. Any other questions from anybody else have a question?
Yeah, at what point do we have to decide on a further contribution? I mean, is, uh, I guess my question is, is the construction process long enough that we put it in the next budget or are we gonna have to make a decision before then?
I think that's up to you as the council. I mean, you, you can go ahead now and decide if you want to have those funds available. And if they don't get it finished before June thirtieth, you would automatically roll into the next year anyway.
We have funds in, available. We, we're not talking a, a fortune. We're talking thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, from what I can see from the budget reports, there's money there. Flat, not laughing, but there.
We haven't committed on the amount.
No.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Right. I mean, there's some there to some extent. And isn't it the moving target with donations still coming in, action and stuff?
So. Vantage towns calls, it was, uh, it was get to the, and for a short amount, then they would come back to the town and say, we're there, but we not, we need just much more to complete the project. And then the town could take, take that under advisement at that time.
We got at least the next, we got at least the next month to figure it out. But by, by May, we're probably gonna need to, to be ready to cough up some money or lose some, some labor before they, they leave. So.
I was just gonna say, thank you, Steve, for coming in and clarifying.
I don't quite do for Tim, but no.
Okay. If you don't have any for more, I gotta go pick up some grandbabies.
I'd say.
See you in August, Steve.
You're in August?
Eighties flashback.
Eighties flashback.
First weekend of August.
What, what is that?
Eighties flashback.
Fl, eighties flashback. Is that August? I know that I just signed up for, uh, the, the Braveheart 5Ks.
Oh, really? Downtown? Downtown Franklin?
Yeah.
Can you, can you gavel him out a quarter?
This is free.
Taking a passion time here. We're gonna give a little latitude, all right? Especially since you mentioned the name of our wonderful town. Okay. Uh, is there anything else on the skate park?
Yeah, I want to ask Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
What are you looking for money-wise from the Tony Hall Foundation?
They said they can give us between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand depending on their.
How good or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think it was huge, but.
It's not odd, but.
Yeah, that, that'd be very.
It took a change. And then the Nantahela Health Foundation has just opened up today and they have between five thousand and fifty thousands. And a skate park's a great healthy alternative for our community. So I'm hoping that they'll support us also in some fashion.
Anyone else? Not, we'll move on to new business requests for street closures, Streets of Franklin Heritage Events for 2022. Brooke Reel, President.
Hello, town council members. My name is Brooke Reel and I'm with the Streets of Franklin Heritage Association. And I'm here to request our yearly street closures. The first request I have is for May twenty-eighth, from eight AM to six PM for our annual spring market day, closing Iola and Main Street. The second request I have is for, uh, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, from six AM to five PM for our hometown heritage festival, closing Iola and Main Street. The third is September third, twenty twenty-two, from six AM to five PM for our fall market day. And that would just be Main Street closing. And then the fourth is for October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, from three PM to seven PM, uh, for our Monster Mash on Main. And that would also be Iola and Main Street.
No issues on any of those? The only thing is, is to talk to the police chief a month before just to make sure they've got it on there.
Yeah, I was, that's my question. I was gonna ask if, uh, Chief Harrell or anybody at the police department had any problems with it. Uh, don't seem to be any at this point in time.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Lewis to approve the request for the street closings for twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guffey. Discussion.
Do we have a calendar somewhere that gives all the, like Mr. Lynn's stuff and the towns and the street, the heritage?
Tony Angel puts it on the events page.
On the best places in the town website.
Okay.
And as the streets too, we are actually working on getting like a Q R code with everything going on in town. So people can just scan it and see everything, whether it's us or not.
Mr. Goffey.
If we're gonna do July Fourth fireworks this July fourth, we already do a pretty big event during the daytime for kids downtown, a July Fourth parade. And we got bouncy houses and slides and watermelon. And I'm gonna try to get out of being a beauty pageant judge again this year. Um, so we already do quite a bit of things downtown. Um, I see that as a, a great thing to just have a block party downtown every July fourth, everybody hang out and then walk over to Town Hill and watch the fireworks over, over Whitmore. I think it's something we should consider. We're not ready to do it tonight, but I think July fourth would be a good event just to be downtown all day.
And music.
And music. There you go. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we could have, uh, you know, a couple of bands on the square. They have Shenandoah? Run some laps. Yeah, Shenandoah would be good. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I have one comment. Uh, just a thank you to the Streets of Franklin Heritage Association for everything they do. Really appreciate it.
So we had a motion and we had a second. And we had a discussion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by, by raising your hand. It was unanimous. Thank you. Anybody opposed and obviously not, since it's unanimously approved. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Brooke, for being here. And thank you for all y'all do for both of our teams. Items from the council? Do we have any items from the council?
We just go around and order?
We can do that.
Don't start here. I'll pass.
I'll start. Mr. Donald's is passing. Go up there. Are you speaking or are you passing?
I said March July Fourth piece. I'll pass.
Ms. Lane.
I'm, um, done a lot of work on the information that Amy and the A B C board, um, provided us. And I do think that we have a opportunity to, um, really receive some more revenue from, um, the A B C board. It, it seems pretty obvious to me that, that we could do that without hurting the A B C board or, um, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I think we're working on creating a better working relationship with our board. And we're all working together for, for better for the town.
Uh, I heard, I heard it mentioned a little earlier. I just, uh, I agree. Uh, I think, maybe it's the things you asked about social districts possibly. Um, I would definitely, I very much did. Uh, I would ask you, I guess, uh, Amy, if you maybe have any advice, it was a good first step for maybe the council to start tackling that subject. Cause it needs to be something we do that.
Well, I think you brought it up at the council retreat as something that you wanted to look at moving into the future. Um, several municipalities around us are trying it out. Uh, Waynesville, Silva, Bryson City. Um, my advice is wait and see how their policy development goes and make sure that it passes muster. And then we can emulate what they might do. But I, I do think that is on the horizon for you to look at as an item for consideration.
I would, my perception of it is, is very easily misunderstood. So I think several meetings in a row of talking about what it is and what it is not, which is, you know, town turns into Sodom and Gomorrah and just wherever you want things.
It's not, it's not every day. It's on selected dates, like a July fourth or a St. Patrick's Day or whatever day we chose. It's not twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five.
Right. You have to set physical geographical limitations as well as time limitations. But yeah, I think making sure others go through a, a couple of events first so that we don't have egg on our face by going into it too quickly.
And let them do the work.
Yeah.
Still.
Daddy said you don't buy the new model. You wait till the next year comes out and they've worked all the bugs out of it. Mr. Lewis.
I'll just say one more thing about the vote tonight on outdoor dining. And that is that, uh, I'm a, I'm a grown adult. I don't have a whole lot of time to spend on Facebook, but I did get a lot of comments forwarded to me over the past couple of weeks questioning why I and other people on this board supported outdoor dining and, and not in a really friendly way, some of the comments. And, um, I'd just like to close out by going on the record to say that whatever vote I take on this board, I honestly do it and I believe it's in the public interest.
I just got one thing to say and then we'll go on to our announcements and so forth. This is, uh, getting ready to be a really busy season with a budget coming up and staff's working on that. And I would like to take a moment at the, at the, run the risk of embarrassing our town manager. But you have to, have to understand, I've been, I've been a town manager. I kind of know what they have to do. And, uh, our town manager has done a fabulous job. She's not only the town manager, she's also the H R director. She's the clerk to the board and she's all the other things that, that it takes to put this together. And I've told her before, I haven't worked anywhere where the manager gave us an update every week on what's been going on. I think that's a perfect thing and I appreciate her doing that. And, uh, if you don't get a chance to tell her, you appreciate it. Cause a lot of times, the job that the manager does is expected and appreciated, but not necessarily made public. So thank you, Amy, for all you can do for us. And we're getting a real bargain, folks. Thank you for what you do. Uh, we are supposed to have a special call meeting of the town council on April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at six PM for a budget work session. I have a little bit of a problem with that because I'm supposed to be at a meeting in Winston-Salem on that day. I didn't realize that the way we adopted our budget calendar for this year. Is there any possibility that the board could readjust that schedule to have? That's on a Tuesday, by the way. Could we do that on the, on the day before, on a Monday night or earlier on the day of, uh, just on the nineteenth?
Mayor, the reason it's not on Monday night is because we have a planning board meeting.
You got a planning board meeting? Okay. Can we do it early? Could we do it earlier on the 19th instead of at 6:00 p.m.?
Four, it's probably not early enough, though. You could get to Winston-Salem, isn't it?
How long is it? You want us to, about three and a half hours? Three and a half hours. I mean, I don't have to be at a meeting that day, but I got to be at 1:00 a.m. the next morning. I could leave at 4:00 a.m. to get there.
I hear you, I hear you.
I don't anticipate it taking a really, really long time to go over our budget. It may take more time than I imagined, but.
But I don't want to rush through it.
I don't want to rush through it either, so I was hoping that perhaps if we can move it up around lunchtime.
I won't be able to make it, I'll be at work that day.
All day till four?
Yeah, usually.
So it's the conclusion of it being Monday night, just that this room is occupied?
Is that it? We're not tied up with the planning board. That planning board's a separate meeting, right?
It starts at four, and as Justin indicated, they usually don't go past five.
So they'll be finished by 5:00 o'clock on Monday?
It's still 5:30 on Monday.
It's still 5:30 on the 18th?
I can't be here then, Monday. Especially back there after we run into the staff. W 53, let's start right. And it's up to the school system, it's for the 50s. Publicity and I feel that the Jewish department can make a better work, so we'll keep this up. Just to make it more complicated.
4:00 o'clock on Tuesday, it sounds like.
Did you make it earlier than four?
3:45.
I have a three.
That'll be tough.
How about a 3:30?
Four, I've already cut some people off.
How about 3:30? All right, 3:30 on the 19th then, instead of 6:00 p.m.
5:00, I said I'll bring you a Coke.
I can be here.
All right, great, I'll hold you to it. Thank you all for doing that, and I appreciate that. And hopefully, I'll be able to get down there and get to that meeting, and everything will be all right. But I appreciate your consideration for that. Go ahead.
We'll get an email on the day before to remind us we're supposed to be here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, or a personal phone call, or a policeman may knock on your door. So be ready for any and all that might happen. Next town council meeting is scheduled for May the 2nd, 2022, and the town offices will be closed on Friday, April the 15th, in observance of Good Friday, that's a state holiday, on the state holiday schedule. We have a consideration under General Statute 143-3811 concerning the acquisition of real estate, real property via the county. And the town attorney has recommended that it will be discussed in closed session. And so if the board is willing to go into closed session as this property acquisition, will they entertain a motion for that?
Yeah, but it's the town thinking about it, not the county, but yes.
The town.
So.
Have a motion, go into closed session. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye raising your hand. Okay, we're now in closed session. We don't expect any action to come out of closed session, in case y'all want to hang around.
But there is a possibility?
There's not much of a possibility at all.
So we're staying here?
So we just stay right here, if it's okay, as long as Bobby turns off his paper board.